This time I will call the regular meeting of the Franklin Township Board of Trustees to order on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and it is twelve P. M. I would ask everybody at this time to please silence your cell phones and keep all comments to yourself if you have not signed up to speak. At this time, I would ask trustee Fleishman if he would open us with the word.
Mr. Stevens, would you please shut the door? Thank you, sir. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to come to do the work of the people of the township, Lord. And we ask that you keep a calmness and peace in us to this meeting as we work for the betterment of the township, for it's in your name we pray, amen.
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 Gentlemen, this is pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a few things on our schedule today, and we're gonna move some around. We'd like to start off with roll call. Yes, thank you.
James.
Yes.
John.
Yes.
Yes, we did not change that. First on the agenda with moving will be Proto. Mr. Razor, are you ready for this?
Yes, sir. Todd, Breaker, is Todd here?
Yes, sir.
Can you kind of bring the board up to speed? I don't see, I don't, Bill, Mr. Tools here. If you gentlemen can kind of bring the board up to speed, what's this been like, a two-year endeavor with Proto, they're located on Stimel Avenue here in the township?
Yeah, they're four hundred Stimel Road, they're at the south side of Burliner Park on the east side of seventy-one.
So if you and or Bill could kind of...
Well, the site, the site's a former landfill. We received notice that a building was constructed on that site two years ago, two and a half years ago. I had visited the site. Sorry. I had visited the site prior to that building being built, instructed them to make sure they go through the proper channels, get zoning compliance, seek the help board, and do a building permit with us before they constructed anything. They did receive a permit for a electric service to a small shed, which was pre-manufactured, placed on the ground there as a gatehouse, they were using it to drop lot for a tow company. I received a call from a building citizen saying, hey, what's the deal with this building at four hundred Stimel? I told him what I had already known about the permit and it being pre-manufactured, it did not need a permit. He's like, a building that big? I was like, well, sir, it's only like a eight by eight. He's like, you need to go down. I proceeded to go down there, found the building under construction, asked to see their permit, knowing they didn't have one, because of that, until still today, I talked with Nicole Randazio, who manages most of the building department paperwork. There was no permit, I had not seen one, they had not seen one, we knew they didn't have one. I talked to a company that was doing some electrical work there, asked to see it. They said you need to talk with the owners, they have the permit, but according to the state of Ohio, you must keep a copy of the plans, the permits, and the inspection card on site. They didn't have any of that. They pointed me the direction of a gentleman named Brooks, and we found out his first name, he was associated with Proto. He said that the owners had the permits. And at that point, I told him and the people with the electric company, I said, I know you don't have a permit, I've talked to our building department folks every day, you don't have one, you need to stop working. I then contacted Mr. Tool, said, hey, we've got a building that's under construction, well underway, it was under roof, part of the floor had been poured, they were still working on finishing some of that. He came down, we had a discussion with, was Mr. Whitbridge there with us that day? Mr. Whitbridge, who's the owner of Proto, and another gentleman was with us, we had a conversation, told them cease and desist, and give you a paperwork in order, that's when they proceeded to tell us, and then emailed later that they were a public utility and exempt from any of the rules of the state of Ohio. I contacted the several different people, EPA, Board of Health, zoning, Department of Commerce, Public Utilities, and spoke with lots of people about all this, none of them knew anything of the building, including the people with Public Utilities and Mr. I think Williamson was in charge of it, he said, no, they are not exempt. So, we proceeded to have further discussions with them, they never had anything else for us, then we had a meeting with lots of people, EPA, Public Health, zoning, and they are in the process legally of taking them to court to deal with it. It's been a long process, and we met with an architect from them, with them, last week, Mr. Razor? Last week, Julie was there, Bill was there, I was there, and they showed us the plans for the building. They will have to submit a new permit application to us, but frankly, if I'm wrong, Mr. Tool, you and I agree that until all the other entities are satisfied with what regulations need to be addressed, they won't get a building approval from us. So they are, they are operating as a business currently, but we are waiting to see how the other lawsuits from the other entities play out before we do anything, because we are far down that chain. EPA, health, and zoning should be taking care of things long before it gets on our hands. So hopefully, as it moves through the court system, they come to resolution before we have to make any other decisions, so.
Gentlemen, you guys are with Proto?
That's correct.
And you are?
I'm the owner.
You're the owner.
Yes, my name's David, I'm counsel for Proto, I represent Proto in the environmental action that is being described, so happy to provide whatever it takes.
The million dollar question I'd have is, why didn't you just come to us and get a permit?
We believe that we are, we do fall under the exemption of being a privately held public utility, because our business is regulated both price and location by the Public Utilities Commission. We are willing to pay the fines and proceed through the permit process with the township, because honestly, we think that that's the best resolution versus adding another court case to, to the, to the docket as far as trying to prove through the court system that we are. Because, because the PUCO does regulate our rates, and they regulate how far we can be from a place of tow, and that we cannot just shut down our business after we've towed someone's car under the public utility statute. That was our, that was our argument for it. I think that the best resolution is to go through the permitting process at this point to, to be, to be a, the best solution for, for everyone, but I still believe that there is an argument to be made that we are a privately held public utility because of those, those stipulations.
Mr. Tool, you know, no one has regulated this when it was being built, I mean, we have no idea how the structure is at this particular point, is there any way to say that they continue with what they got, or do they start all over to make sure that everything is adequate and up to code?
With nothing being looked at upfront with the construction process, in the meeting with the architect that we had last week, the architect had an estimate for resolution to remove all the sides, all the outer skin of the building, and to put fasteners in place, nails in place, to upgrade the building to the minimum standards of the Ohio Building Code, which the building currently does not meet. The building's not fire sprinkler, that's a requirement of the Ohio Building Code. They've worked on the large trucks in there that are over ten thousand pound. The floor was never looked at for adequate loading, the plumbing under the floors were never looked at for proper drainage. Nothing was ever looked at at this building, and in reading to Mr. Whitbridge's, I'm not an attorney, let me start with this statement, if you read the statute, they continue to refer to, it refers to zoning, 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 nothing refers to the building code.
So is the building actually being occupied?
Yes, it's fully operational.
And it has been inspected by structural engineers, and the agreement we had with the builder was that it was being built to building code and that no shortcuts were being taken. We had a period of a year that the builder would not respond to any of our requests, and that's why we hired this architect that they met with last week, and now that we have furnished them with what our architect has done, now the builder is, has engaged their counsel to try and come up with some type of resolution to bring it up to code, because it was supposed to be up to code when it was built.
I don't mean to interrupt, would it be helpful if they came up and kind of, and kind of said why they're here, and kind of what their, what their hope, what their ask of the trustees would be?
But, you know, even though you had a, had a structural engineer look at it?
Yeah.
That is no excuse to overstep getting a building permit and following the rules of this township.
Okay.
No excuse.
Okay.
So, I heard what you said in regards to the person you spent a year in trying to get in contact.
Yeah.
We share the same pain, because I've heard the same thing with us getting in contact with you and trying to stop this to work the correct way. When we were trying to stop you, it wasn't to keep you from building the building, it was to keep you to get from, to a certain point where now, I don't want to see you have to spend all this cost to tear it down and then do it right. Had we not had that year of no communication from yourself...
There's never been a year of no communication.
I don't know how long it was, I know there was a period, my apologies, I'll walk that back.
Yeah, there has never been a year go by that we haven't communicated.
Had we had communication right away from day one, where as we just heard to the board, where's the permit, where's the permit, where's the permit, and everybody just kept looking the other way, had we had it at that time, we could have went to you and said, listen, this is what needs to happen, let's stop this, let's, you know, it's not saying you couldn't get them, but as Mr. Tool has just explained, that, you know, there's a lot of lives that our fire department, different people have to, we have to service you in your place. I don't want to see firemen go into a place that we know what certain standards there's going to be, how long a burn time could be, a lot of different things, I don't want to see a life lost over something that may or should have been done a certain way. That is why there is a procedure when you go through step A to step B to step C, and at this point, sometimes it's hard to go back and, yep, it's there, and as Mr. Tool I just heard, they're expecting a minimum of the different straps and things of that nature, so, Mr. Chairman, I'm finished.
So you had no soil samples?
No soil samples for what?
Seeing the foundation, where you're putting your foundation in your building?
I don't know what the builder had to try to, the builder...
That's your responsibility.
The builder did not, did not communicate with us for a year, basically, so...
That's your responsibility as the owner of the property.
Okay.
Building the building, that's your responsibility, not the builder, you. So what you did, in essence, by not having soil samples and having a foundation checked by an inspector, you endangered the lives of not only firefighters or police officers, but your own employees, you endangered their lives. Do you realize that?
I understand what you're saying.
What's your ask today?
I just wanted to come here and answer any questions that I could, and let you know that we are beginning the process with the builder for them to bring it up to code as they were supposed to from, from the beginning.
Do you realize building, bringing it up to code means taking it down and showing our, our building department the foundation and your soil samples?
So the builder assured me that it was up to code when they built it, so that, that's the process we're going down, is we're putting this, asking the builder to prove these, these items.
Mr. Tool, am I correct on that, they, they would need to take it down to bring it up to code, you'd need to see the foundation?
The foundation, that was discussed in one of the meetings with them on site, yes. Like Todd had said, prior to the floor being placed, I said, do not place the concrete floor. The statement was made, we're pouring concrete anyway. I went later on and said, we can remove the floor later on, and it got a bit contentious, let's just say that. The possibility exists of digging down on the outside of these foundations and sampling the soils below the foundations from the outside, looking at the size of the foundation, the depth of the footer, the diameter of the footers, can all be done with the building standing there, but to do the strapping, nailing, et cetera, the skin, possibly the roof lock, the loft of it, to be correctly installed.
And that is an old landfill, correct?
Yes, it is.
So my question to you, and I understand when you say it's the builder and they should have done this and et cetera, but anytime, you know, I'm a business person, et cetera, when my name goes out there on a product or et cetera, I need to make sure, I'm the owner, I need to make sure, and I understand, but it doesn't sound so good when you say, I was assured. To me, to be assured is, let me see the building permit, who did you talk to, the counties on board, did townships on board, and those, but the biggest concern is, being that that was a landfill, where you're wanting to put it, what is the ground composed of, because it's going to compact over time, because that's how...
We do, we have had soil borings there, there have been soil borings, and there's going to be more soil borings.
Gotcha, so we don't know this because we have not ever been told this, we've never seen this?
Well, they said they spoke with the EPA and the Health Department, and the Health Department absolutely knows there have been soil borings.
Sure, and I think...
And if, if I may, we have an agreed entry in place with the Health Department to resolve the environmental issues of the property, so the, the work being done with respect to the environmental issues is underway, under an agreement with the Health Department and the counsel who filed the lawsuit.
Okay.
So, from my perspective, we're on an orderly course with that stuff, I'm happy to answer any questions. My understanding is we are here to, to talk about the, the issues with the building.
Sure, and, and due respect, sir, this is the first time that this has ever, I've been here eleven years, and this is the first time that this has ever come to my table, and I've served in many roles as a trustee, I do know, Mr. Breaker, I've heard the comments about what was going on and et cetera. Now, I will say that you serve the public in a good role with Proto and the things that go on, however, I get what you're saying, but you gotta take a step back from our view that this is the first meeting we've ever had, and we're trying to address things from day one to day fifty-seven.
Yeah, yeah, I was not suggesting that your questions were appropriate, I was just hoping to provide you information, so that...
And we had that meeting on site with Mr. Tool, Mr. Breaker, so it's not like we have not been...
But you ignored what they said, don't pour the concrete.
The meeting I had with them was after the, after everything was done.
But it still falls on you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, look, it's...
It, it wasn't that we had the meeting and then, and then I did that, so...
We, the contract with the builder specifies that the builder has responsibility for this, but you guys are correct that ultimately, this is, this is Proto's property, and Proto's operating, and so unfortunately, now Proto has to come up with a solution, so the intention here is to get the building in compliance.
I understand that, yeah. So one of the things I need to make absolutely clear, in Franklin Township, where Franklin Township lies now, Franklin Township is the next building, you see what's going on with West Loma, you remember that's that, correct? If we allow them to do similar to what you did, or if they go back and say, well, look at Proto, they're on a dump, and you let them do X, Y, and Z, it's something that is, most attorneys, as you and you would understand, is called past practice.
Presentance.
And we can't allow someone to just sidestep, whether it was Henry, it, it doesn't matter if it was intentional, intentional or not, now the next step is, if it needs to come down and then go back up correctly, it's what's going to need to happen, and we, I don't know, I'm the guy that sits here along with my counterparts, and we vote based upon what we hear and what we see. So what I'm hearing from the experts that work for the township and represent the township, we have to go by what they say to us and what we're hearing today. Are you willing to go through those steps of what Mr. Tool is saying, the roof has to come off, this has to come off, and et cetera, and go forward?
I, I want to have further dialogue with the builder, I want to bring it into compliance, and I'm willing to have a structural engineer do periodic inspections on it, as far as it depends on what the, what the monetary layout is and who's paying for it, whether it's me or the builder, or, you know, how that happens.
So your builder, is he not insured?
I believe they are insured.
So, bonded?
Yeah, M Q S, yes.
So, it would seem to me, if I was in your shoes?
Yeah.
And you're hearing that you're not in compliance and you're not this, and your approach is, let me bring in a third party to do X, Y, and Z, I would have already been downtown with your attorney filing and making sure that you're protecting yourself for the cost that's going to come on to you, and I'm sure you have many sleepless nights over what's going to happen with this. My advice to you is, and I would secure what you could, funding from someone that did what they did, because it only makes you look better, I would not stand there and support the person that did this work, I would be wanting them to make it right by coming to us and coming and saying, you know, because I'm hearing from our building department that at a minimum, this needs to be done. So if I'm hearing that from that, then that's what, I'm one board member, but that's what I'm going to expect.
We've had conversations with the builder and the builder's counsel, and they recognize that they have an issue here, and they've extended a willingness to help in some fashion. We want to have that dialogue with them in the context of knowing specifically what needs to be done at the property, because I think an opportunity for a resolution that makes sense is for the builder to actually do some of the work that they should have done the first time around, so our work recently, and the reason that the architect was meeting with Bill, was to lay out, all right, this is the scope of work that, that the engineers have suggested could be done, and my, I wasn't there, but my understanding is the architect said, okay, here's the estimate for this, what are our options in terms of handling these, these items? We absolutely want to get a fire alarm and sprinkler system in there, we absolutely want to take care of the electrical and the plumbing, but there are some aspects of the structural side of the building where we're looking for a cost-effective alternative to doing what's been proposed.
The cost-effective way would have been to pull permit at the beginning.
Again.
And that's, that's, for me personally, that's what our recommend, that's what our building, our supervisor is, is suggesting, therefore, that's what I'm going to say.
So it's like this, if a frog had wings, it wouldn't bump its rear, and what I mean by that, if this was a state, if this, if this, whoever you're, who is the building person?
M Q S.
Okay, had they worked for the state, I can assure you right now, the state attorney general would be all over this, and there would be funding set up aside to make this correct. Are you sure that you want the same builder to try to correct the mistakes versus obtaining some type of funding for someone else to do it?
John, that, that's on the wall, I mean, at, at this point in time, I mean, I'd like to see the report from EPA, I'd like to see the report from the Health Department before I run their decision here, but as of right now, personally, I'm staying with our building, building, with Mr. Tool, if he says it needs to come down and look at the foundation from there up, that's what it's going to be.
He did say that there was an option to explore the foundation without tearing the building down, though, he just said that, okay.
I would be working with him closely if I was you.
What is it?
What about the pipes underneath the cement?
I, I don't know what options we have for that.
Remove the floor, like I said before.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, Mr. Breaker, if you have anything to add on the floor...
I don't have anything, just a simple fact, coming into office and I didn't have enough, I did get brought up to date yesterday with Todd, and I'm just not knowledgeable enough as saying as you, gentlemen, I'm taking all this in, taking notes, and I'm not sure that we're going to get to a resolution here today on this, but we can keep talking about it or whatever you want to do.
Gentlemen?
Yes.
Now that I know who the builder was, I've been doing building official work for the last ten years, M Q S, this is probably the seventh or eighth time Mr. Miller's names came up, working with no permit, and I had to go out, get a permit, I, I didn't know I needed it, so I, I, that's a grain of salt. I've dealt with Mr. Miller for ten years, I know better, he knows better through conversations.
Have you, has he in the past constructed any that were up to code, that you are aware
We didn't have the opportunity to inspect them, because he built them without any of the privilege of any permits or inspections, and you need to check the Delaware County, because they had a suit against him also.
Okay.
That's just some information, it might be handy to have.
And I know you may not be able to talk about it, because it's an ongoing litigation, but where are you at with the environmental court, with the lawsuit they filed against you?
Yeah, so...
I know you have dual, you have entry for...
Yeah, so an agreed, an agreed entry is an effective, like a settlement, so we have submitted an entry to the judge, the judge has signed it, and it's, we're going to do this and this and this, in this period of time, this period of time, this period of time, and if we violate that, we're, we're violating a court order. So it's a fairly serious agreement that we've reached, that, that agreement is ongoing right now, it's in progress. So the case is effectively resolved, like if you log on to the docket, you'll see that the case is closed, and that's because there's a, there's a court order saying, these are the things that Proto's going to do, and this is when they're going to do it by, and we're, we're moving along as scheduled currently.
Best of luck, I mean, I know, I'd hate to be in your shoes, I don't know what more to say to you, but thank you for at least sharing it with the board.
Absolutely.
I would, I would highly recommend that you work with Mr. Tool, Mr. Breaker very closely.
The building codes changed in the meantime, they were, they were issued a disapproval, they were issued no phased approvals, no, no allowance to do anything.
Right.
And a response is required within thirty days by the Ohio Building Code, that, that response expired a year ago. This process has to begin again with a full resubmission of a totally redesigned set of drawings to meet the criteria of the new code with all, all these inspections that are required, and we want to visually see them. A third-party agreement is up to me, I accept an engineer's report, and given the nature of this project and the flipper attitude I've had with the request for inspections, the answer is going to be no, I'm not taking a third-party's inspection report, we want to see it ourselves. I apologize if I'm taking a hard stance, I shouldn't have taken a hard stance with the electric service to feed the building a year ago, and they wouldn't have electricity.
I think, yeah, I think everyone knows now where, where this township stands, that, you know, you're, you're not going to build something here without permits.
So the township is not in agreement of any ongoing inspections that we're willing to have done with a structural engineer to at least give you some peace of mind?
Whatever that man right back there says, says needs to happen, it needs to happen.
Trustee, can I give a bit of clarification, part of the conversation last week, and the architect, basically trying to, trying to have a discussion of, okay, obviously the options are, basically...
Hold on, who do you represent?
Our office is legal counsel for the township.
Okay, okay, got it, thank you.
So in terms of, in terms of options, item one, basically start, starting from scratch and bringing the, the building entirely into compliance, or two, bringing it into compliance with the code as much as possible, but trying to figure out, are there some, again, the, you know, ways to address the concerns without truly unpeeling the onion and putting the onion back together? I believe what he's referring to, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe what he's referring to in terms of the structural problem, or the, some of the structural items that cannot be confirmed, that they're in compliance without peeling the onion and putting it back together, would be some sort of ongoing annual structural engineer comes out and does a report and that type of thing, not saying one way or another, but just to give some additional context, you've mentioned the, the, an, an annual inspection a couple of times.
Thank you. I, I think hearing Mr. 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 Tool and our legal counsel, it's pretty cut and dry, you're going to need to start over.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you want to, enjoy, like, should we make a motion that what the board is saying as far as recognizing what Mr. Tool's recommendations are?
So I don't think the board needs to, to take any action today, I believe the, kind of the, the purpose of the discussion was, the township has, the township staff has had some background conversations, and out of the meeting last week with the architect, obviously, everyone around the table said, look, you know, we are all at service to the trustees, and we can sit here with opinions, but at the end of the day, the buck stops with the three of you, and so we want to, you know, felt it was appropriate to get a temperature check with the trustees, and if there was an appetite for, again, what, what was kind of the general direction?
I, I think the general, I can't speak for everyone here, but I think the general direction of this table is rely on Mr. Tool, what Mr. Tool says. And I think you've heard that we're past the point of, what, I forget what you called it, but basically it's, you're, you're starting over.
That's fine. I was extending the option to have a structural engineer while this is ongoing, do an inspection on the building to address some of the safety concerns. You, you brought up the safety concerns. That's the one of, one of the ideas that had came up. If that is not going to get us any further, then there's no need to.
Spend that money. I understand.
Yeah.
So given the light of it, and you would have to put yourself in our shoes, given the magnitude and the light of this, it doesn't cost you any more money to, to work with Mr. Tool. Phone calls, emails, doesn't cost you but your time. Spending the money on a, on a third party, to me, I would much want to work with Mr. Tool.
And, and our architect has, he speaks the same language as Mr. Tool. I don't speak that language, so. And he, he's had, I think, more than one conversation with Mr. Tool, so.
But I think you yourself may want to, to try to bring back a cohesiveness so that we all can work together on this, so that we're all together. This is probably the first time there's been a meeting where all parties are in a room. Am I correct, Mr. Tool?
A formal meeting, yes. Sitting here making sure I'm making a correct statement.
We met on site, though.
I met on site.
We haven't met on site.
Okay. So.
We had some email and, and email conversations, I believe. I don't believe her is a fan. We had some email conversations.
At this point in time, I would highly recommend you get with Mr. Tool and Mr. Booker.
I, I don't, I want a specific, what you want me to get with them on. I have my architect.
What he wants.
Okay.
And it's not what I want.
It's what the code says.
It's what the Ohio Building Code requires. And again, their minimum requirements, minimum, none of the minimum standards were met.
That's what we want.
Blatant, blatant ignoring of the law.
The conversation between me and him, though, is I, I can't disassemble it today myself and reassemble it. So we are working in that direction to figure out what the, what the builder is going to do. So I'm not, I have no issue having a conversation with them. I just don't want there to be an expectation that I can, you know, resolve it overnight either.
No, we, we know it's going to be a process, but the first thing is getting building permits.
Okay.
Do you have an ongoing relationship with this builder? Because you keep referring to, to me. I wouldn't let the builder touch it. Again, I would see someone else.
No, but I would prefer to avoid another lawsuit. And I've at least given them the opportunity now that they have been corresponding with us to, to tell us what their resolution is to, to live up to what they were supposed to do and what they were paid for.
Right. I understand that.
Thank you. Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
We've beat this war long. Up next is the scholarship, Leila Kidd. Mr. Blevins, you want to handle this?
So Leila, do you mind just standing up for a second? I wanted to introduce everybody to Leila Kidd. She's going to be the recipient, one of the recipients for the first Franklin Township trustee scholarship fund. And I'm trustee Blevins. And to my right is the chairman, trustee Leiser, and the vice chairman, trustee Fleishman. And Leila is one of the recipients. The other one couldn't make it today. She had a test today. And so I wanted to make a statement that there's no taxpayer dollars in this scholarship fund. We've been able to get private money to donations to pay for the scholarship fund. And I wanted to, just one more statement, then we're going to get to your, to your check. The scholarship fund is done through Franklin Heights. And the requirement is that you attend Franklin Heights High School and that you live in Franklin Township. And so those are the requirements for the scholarship. And anybody who's here or is listening, you can apply next year after the first of the year. Reach out to the counselors at Franklin Heights and they'll put you in touch with the scholarship forms. You can also stop here. Nicole will be happy to guide you if you're not having any luck at Franklin Heights. And so at this time, I'm going to go ahead. I would like to thank, thank the staff for all their help in getting this together. And I'm going to go ahead and make the presentation. So yes, congratulations. And I wanted to tell you that I rocked the black and gold for the Falcons. These two gentlemen are Wesleyan Coopers.
I'm Wesleyan. Our house is divided.
So it's with a lot of pleasure. I represented the trustees of Franklin Township and I presented this check for a thousand dollars. And good luck.
Oh, nice job.
Education and you're going to win green. So best of luck. I hope that helps. Mom and dad, thanks for coming. I'm sorry about work, getting back to work. Feel free to come up, take some pictures together. Nicole will take pictures for you and everything. And I appreciate you attending the meeting.
I would, I would ask, can you come back to work? Update on where you're at and what, what, what you're doing?
Thank you.
Definitely, we're retiring here in Franklin.
You guys want to take some pictures up at the table?
Thank you. Feel free to take your pictures or whatever you'd like to do, folks.
You guys should be in it.
Okay.
Go ahead and send it. Get one of them first.
You can be beside your dog.
Stress. Okay?
This is, this is. Oh, yeah. This is part that we just handled. I don't care.
Good luck.
Best of luck and graduation. Great job, mom and dad. Takes all the part of it, starts at the roof.
I'm so sorry for the delay.
It was well worth it.
I'll start from two.
There you go. Thank you.
No, I get it.
Feel free to go.
Department head, you can have your, department head, you can have your chair back.
No, go ahead.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. We've done that. I would like to ask Franklin County Sheriff's Department, Deputy Atkins, if he would give a, his report.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dan Atkins. I'm just meeting you ladies on our old sheriff's office and my role specifically is just to make you guys this amazing department. You guys, whatever the assistance was. From the last meeting, that was that. We talked about some of the issues over at Westmount Elementary. Did reach out to transportation department. They assured me that it wouldn't no longer be an issue. I fully believe them, but I'm still trying to monitor them.
We have to take it in faceback.
I have to at least trust them once since I started getting them, so. Yeah, supposedly that issue's taken care of. And a few other things. We'll have some more high visibility enforcement in the next week or so. I can't go into details yet. Insurance initiative, there'll be a vibration between our office, you guys' office, police and technology patrol. It'll be out here in the west side. There'll be more on that coming in the next few days. Like, if you see high visibility enforcement, crack down on some of the things that's going on. I'll be out here after maybe.
We welcome.
Questions or need assistance, just tell me now.
Also, I'd like to publicly thank you as well as the sheriff's department, Baldwin, Sheriff Baldwin. As that shooting that we had on Klein Road, all entities worked together seamlessly. I've seen some of the footage and it didn't matter what color you were in uniform. Everyone protected the, the community as one. So thank you.
And I'd like to thank you for, you know, the hard work you are doing for our township. We see it. We've seen your reports. We've seen your emails and we do appreciate it. We need all the help we can get.
We're better, we are better together.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, she's signed up on here, but she's on our agenda. Laura, Laura Palmer regards new parking signs.
Yes.
Take the photo of yours, ma'am.
Thank you for having me. My name is Laura Palmer. Excuse me. I work for Hypertech Research on Industrial Mile Road. Lately, in the last, say, two months, the parking has gotten out of hand to the mosque. So where our building is, is right next to it, the little road, it's called Westport Road, something like that. We have semis parking in front of the rehabilitation center. We have semis parking in front of the adult MRDD.
Are you right there on the corner of Industrial Mile and are you right across from the mosque?
We are. We have the chain link fence.
Okay. Okay.
Last week, we had a semi parked inside of our chain link fence. We had had to hire a towing company. We've had people's cars damaged because they park in there. We put cones, they don't care. But now what's happening is they're parking on both sides of the streets. So there's one lane. Then if somebody wants to leave and they can't because the sheriff is directing traffic, they will drive through our grass, they will drive through the park, they'll just do a U-turn. But nobody can see because it's blind. It's very dangerous to have, it's a safe, it's a huge safety issue to, to be blind with entrances to our business, entrance to the business across the road, people coming in and out of that T-road. It's, it's just dangerous to have people. We would like to see a, a no parking sign on one side of the road. Doesn't matter which side, but.
Which would you prefer?
We would prefer it on our side because there is less frontage. But it's, and, and we're right there with the intersection. Everybody puts out cones to keep people out of their parking lots during Friday services, which is, you know, it's all private property. But, but with, they don't care. Nobody cares about the safety of somebody else. What they want to do is be close. The mosque has two entrances that are closed. They have a, a south entrance and a west entrance that they have gated off. They have a green space they could use that they could open up, but they don't. So, so people who attend service have to park on the road.
Mr. Chairman, I, I may.
Give me one second.
Sure.
I, I don't want to sound unforgiving on this because this is a definite problem. And I don't sound like I'm making excuses, but I took the information down. I'm going to need to get, I need to look at a map because part of that in there is Prairie Township and part of it is Franklin Township.
Can we butt up against one another?
That intersection is pretty much the dividing line. That mosque is in Prairie Township.
And she is in. Thank you.
And then across the street from hers, Franklin Township.
Okay, so she's in Franklin Township. Her side of the road is in Franklin Township.
The Westport right there, I believe, is Prairie.
There's a section, there's a section of Westport as you go around the curve that is in Prairie.
Then coming down.
Yeah, right.
So I did take a picture to show you what it looks like. And that's on the white side. If you'd like to see it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. You can approach the table.
So the semis are a big problem.
Chief Smith?
Sir?
At one time, I know that we, go ahead and show that in a first meeting. A lot of the semis that was through Havenwood, et cetera, are we still trying to? I know we had another officer at the time that would go out and handle a lot of those. Are we still trying to cover that as much as possible?
Yes. The area you're talking about on Westport is going to be in Prairie, so I don't think we have any signs on there. But as it comes back into Franklin, we do.
See that there's cars on both sides of the road.
You're in this building right here.
No, so that is the assisted living.
Okay.
And then those people walk on the sidewalk. I'm on this side.
You're in this, okay. You're, you're across Westport.
Yes. So we have that chain link fence and then we're, right. So that's a, that's a bobtail semi, but we do have.
The following fifteen, two footer.
And sometimes there's two or three or four. So there's nowhere for anybody to park with those giant semis.
Sure. And what timeframe would you say that that?
Nine to three, thirty to three. It's a short period, but it's very dangerous for anybody trying to go down that road at that time.
Chief?
Sir?
Are we able to reach out to the mosque and let them know that? I know through our contacts with them, that we are seeing issues with the tied up with the semis and the traffic. And they have several other entrances. Would they entertain the opportunity of, of utilizing their own parking spaces?
Yeah, I'll reach out and ask.
Okay.
And please keep, if that doesn't work, please, please give Mr. Major a call. And he'll make sure it gets on the agenda and we will do it. It's long. We can't rule what Prairie Township does. We can't put them in there. If your site is in Franklin Township, we can work with our police chief and find out if we can put some traffic, no stopping signs, no parking signs up.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Major, can we put that on the next agenda? Are you available for the next meeting? Kind of give us an update?
Absolutely.
That would be, that would be, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's perfect.
So our next meeting is, will be not next Thursday, but the following Thursday.
May 30.
May 30.
We'll put you at the top of the agenda so you don't have to, well, it'll be old business, though.
I'm glad that you came in and shared that with us.
Yeah, we don't know these, we don't know this information unless you guys kind of talk to us. But I do remember coming down that street a couple of times. And it seemed kind of congested.
It was horrible during Ramadan. It was terrible. They were already down to the daycare center.
And I would highly recommend Prairie Township book up to our meeting. And even between now and then, I would, I would encourage you to go to one of their meetings and ask the same.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Major can point you in the right direction out there, maybe, of who to talk to in Prairie.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll scratch you off this other sheet.
Thank you.
Patty Spencer. She's been patiently waiting with Southwest Area Committee.
Patience is my middle name. Doesn't matter. It's all good. Hello, everybody. Oh, I missed last week.
We missed you.
They scheduled my son for a Thursday. And next time is going to be on a Tuesday, which is my day for cross dishes. No.
I just didn't check with your scheduling first.
I tell him that all the time. All right. I've got a bunch of stuff. I tried not to pick anything that was due the 18th because to me, that's just too close notification. There is a, which I didn't know, a place for furniture donations. And it's called Future Bank. They will pick up, drop off, and dispose options if you want to donate your gently-used furniture and home goods. Under transportation, Fifth Third's Financial Empowerment Mobile is going to be coming and they can, you can enter your zip code and search for assistance in a specific category where assistance might be needed. So there's that. Linkus, I think you guys know about Linkus. There is information for that and a website you can go to. Look at the blueprints that they're getting done. On May 21st, there is a touch of truck. It's an ambulance storytime. And it is going to be at one of the, where is it? South High Library Branch. And some local Columbus Fire Departments are going to be there. And you have a truck, so if anybody has younger kids or any kids, older kids that like to hang around fire departments, let me do that. Um, on June first, um, City Hall is going to be hosting a Walk for Peace event. And it's, um, a wa- one mile walk to honor and support gun violence survivors. And there is a link that, uh, you can use to get more information. Uh, free energy saver kits. That's going to be, you've got to make an appointment with the Breathing Association and you can obtain your own free energy saver kit. And I have, um, information and picture on that. Zoning code updates. City Council has begun their, um, zoning updates for all of the city of Columbus. And what is going to impact certain areas of the city right now. The southwest area is not yet impacted, but I can see that happening. If you've ever gone to, um, a Arlington Kingsdale Center, uh, that is going to, that's kind of the cookie cutter look of what the new apartments that they are proposing to make it easier for developers to build, um, apartments. They can be anywhere from three to five stories. They can, uh, they are eliminating parking. Right now, our codes require one and a half parking places per unit. It's going to go to zero. And the only thing we can think of is they're going to include underground parks.
I was going to ask where they put the horses.
I, yeah. I, I know some, some, um, some of our members are really into, um, wanting some of that in our area. Because we're really mostly construction and trucking and things like that. Um, I think you might see some of it beginning with the Cooper Stadium with their buildings of, um, uh, the apartments there that they're going to be doing if they can get over some hurdles that they created for themselves. Um, but, um, there's going to be like five different types of apartments, facades, that they're going to be building. And that's going to eliminate some, they say, some of what the area commissioners are going to be struggling with. Um, we've, they have a choice of five. So we don't, we won't be sitting there going, well, we don't like this, or can you do this, or how, this is too high. So that'll be taken away from us as area commissioners and civic associations. Um, there's still going to be a lot of other things that they're going to, um, allow us to still be involved with them. Um, me, I don't know about the other commissioners, but me, since I have such a, a rapport with, with Franklin Township, part of my goal is making sure that if there's a developer that comes in, that they don't put one of these five-story, three-hundred-unit buildings right in the middle of some place right next to you. And keep you guys in the loop.
We appreciate that.
Um, we do have a zoning gallery. And it's open six days a week. Uh, and it's available, it was started April ninth and it's available through June seventh. It's, um, open to the public. The tourists are every thirty minutes and you can go and have a one-on-one with, uh, city people to see what they're talking about. I think right now the corridors they're looking at is West Broad and one oh four, or twenty-three between one oh four and two seventy. Um, everybody's all up in arms right now with, um, Walmart down off of, uh, twenty-three gone and what's going to go in its place and I can almost bet it's going to be one of those apartments.
This is, um, not to interrupt Patty, but this is even more reason that we need to get Home Rule passed in November. Um, we're still going to be getting more details out to you, but we got to protect our boundaries. And that will allow us to set up our own zoning and it'll, and it'll stop Columbus from invading.
Yeah, because if you get an, if you get a, a business that's going to, that goes out of business and somebody comes in, a developer-
It's already zoned commercial. I'm running into that now.
Yep.
So I will leave this up here with you. You can share the information. Thank you. If anybody needs anything. That's all I have.
Okay. Um, all right, we have, um, we've got to go back, we've got to backtrack up to old business. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you, you have a floor on that, but I, I want to, are you, you're good? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that you didn't get a break. Okay.
I'm going to give the trustees a little background on this. Uh, trustees, this, this is a unique situation. We, um, we issued a resolution for nuisance property at, um, that was in the last meeting. Seventeen seventy-six Little Avenue. During this process though, as, as our paperwork went out, this family purchased the home. And I was just speaking with Julie before our meeting started today. What my idea is, Julie agreed, is let's, let's let these folks have the opportunity to fix the home up that they purchased. Um, and if we can help them anyway, we will, but, but I don't think we should pursue the resolutions to call it a nuisance property. Now that these folks have purchased the home and as I understand, you want to rebuild it, rehab it, and make it your home.
Um, yes, correct. Um, so we, when we first purchased the home, we were initially had the idea that it was a fixer-upper. Um, so we were, we were just waiting for the paperwork to receive that it was ours as the real estate said it couldn't touch it. And so it was, um, we had our paperwork. So we just got the paperwork like a week ago and we just went over there to try to, like, clean it up a bit. Um, and then we got the letter that it was going to be demolished. So we're just here to see if there was any way we could have a chance as we are looking to fix it up, have an inspector look at what we can save. As we were also looking some quotes to have it demolished, but it really is a bit out of our budget. So we're just looking to have an inspector see what we can save if we can save it and rebuild it to have, to be a living.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
So you're going to look at both costs. Are you able to put another home on that property, build another home if that cannot be, uh, salvaged? Because sometimes the cost of saving something outweighs the cost of just building new.
Um, yes, we're looking at both ways. Either way, um, we were also trying to, a general contractor, CPB Land, if, to see if, if it's better to demolish and start a new home or just to expand the home.
So my last question would be, at this point, are you going to clean up the outside, cut the grass and, and everything like that while we're waiting?
Yes, we're, we're, we already started cutting the grass. We're working on cleaning out the house. Get, pick, um, renting trailers to clean out the plywood, the doors, the windows.
So you're making it safe now?
Yeah.
Are you new to the township?
Yeah.
Well, I think that's, that's a good reason to give them the opportunity.
Yeah. I would have-
Good neighbors in the township.
You seem, we are dealing when people come and do things, you probably sat back there going, this person spent hundreds of thousands of dollars and didn't do it the right way.
You're doing it the right way.
You're doing it the right way from day one. So we as a board, I know I speak probably on behalf of the board, we like to see people come into the township, take something that is old and actually be a shining star. Because sometimes when you plant flowers, I know one of my neighbors I talked to the other day, I commented him on his, um, home because they just did all this landscaping. And he's like, well, I'm trying to catch up to you. I think I have to catch up to him because his looks better than mine. But a lot of times when people do that and they take it right in their home and they build a nice place, people around them tend to want to clean up too and do better. So we encourage that.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm good with giving them a stay if you are-
So you want to do a, um, a motion?
No, we have to, we'd have to do a resolution and resend the resolution.
Okay.
Um, we, we probably don't have a resolution number for that.
I think they have something else.
Um, yeah, since we're looking to a model, if we would have, we, we can meet full premise with you guys if we're modeling it or, because you went down to Columbus, it was a westbound.
It would be-
Our, we're downtown.
It would be Franklin County.
It's also downtown, correct?
Right.
Franklin County.
Check with Nicole.
She'll be able to help there. Before you go, and I ask Nicole, if you would give her all your contact information. And Nicole is a great resource, but yeah, surveying goes through Franklin County zoning permit.
Yep, un-residential. Yep.
The resolution number is in that, that paperwork that Steve has.
Okay.
Do we need to resend one?
Okay, but we'll need a, if we'll need a resolution number for the resend.
Uh, we also saw that you may send out the letter. Is there like a ticket that we have to pay for that or?
No. No. No, you're good. You're good.
So what we're going to do is-
We're just going to clean up the paperwork here and resend the resolution telling you you have to demolish your property. And put a stay on that for now and we'll, we'll give you some time to progress and-
Right. And, uh, you know, my, again, my thing is we need to clean, make it look nice so the neighbors aren't saying this isn't nice or, and then figure out what you want to do with the building.
Number one thing, stay in touch with us.
Yeah.
Stop to us. So let us know what's going on.
We're, you know, staying at the house. It does have like a large junk, we can't really go at the junkyard, so we're just looking where to place it and to close up the house and no more.
Yeah. We have, we have a lot of resources that, that, you know, just get with Nicole. Um, we're, we're willing to work with you. You know, you're down there today, that shows a lot of, a lot of initiative on your part and, um-
Because had you not come, this would have not been reversed. But also we encourage you as new neighbors, every other Thursday at noon, we have meetings just like these of residents here. Um, you're more than welcome to come and see what's going on in your community and things of that nature. So we would encourage you to be able to come.
Just, and just to clarify, when we hear, when we rescind, there are two resolutions that the board trustees pass. We're going to pass another r- resolution, rescind, cancel. The two resolutions that dealt with demolishing the house. So, um, that will be the, the next meeting. Uh, but to assure you, going forward today, there will nothing happen to your new home.
No.
Nothing will happen to your new home.
Yeah.
So be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board, uh, will put a stay on this property until the next business meeting when, in which we will ask for a resend of both resolutions.
I would, I would gladly second that. Is there any discussion? No. Can you give us a roll call?
We're putting the board to make a motion to stay on it.
That we're going to stay.
A motion.
Yes.
Just a motion.
So I just put down a motion to place a stay on the action that was to be taken on seventeen seventy-six Little Avenue.
Yeah, until the next, yeah, until the next resumé meeting.
Until the next, which is going to be on five thirty.
Yes.
Okay.
And resend it.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
So now it's passed, it's legal. Your house is going to stay there. And what this motion was is to go to our next business meeting, which is on the thirtieth. Then what we'll do as a board, then we have to remove that from it. But nothing's going to happen between us, so you've got to say, do you just heard us vote? So you've got, you're good.
We can finally, we need to clean up the most stuff.
Yeah. Welcome to the township. Just stay, just stay in touch with, stay in touch with Nicole and Steve, but yeah, welcome to the township. We, we welcome you.
Thanks for coming in.
I look forward to see what you do there on meetings.
Yeah.
Excited.
Yeah, Robin asked if you want to.
Thank you. Here, I'll give you a card.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah. Good job.
Reach out for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, we just have one question today.
Oh, we're down to that point?
Yeah. We shouldn't sit here that first.
Yeah, Jan? Where is she at? Dirty.
I just wanted to tell everybody, you say be careful.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving on. We've done that, we've done that. We have jumped around on this agenda. It's going to take me a second. We're down to the department heads and, um, Chief Smith.
Thank you, sir. It's been, it has not been boring. First thing I want to update board on is back in February, and I know I talked to you, Mike, specifically on this one, I and Carol, when they found all the trash on Ray Avenue. I remember we went out, we found an address. Uh, we tracked it down to the south end of Columbus, found out who it was. Um, Officer Kidwell, but weren't with the, um, environmental prosecutor. So this individual was picked up on a felony felony charge. And he actually, they actually gave him an M-three delivery, which was the most they could do, but they actually gave him five days in jail for this. So that is some resolution.
Absolutely.
To the trash.
And he did not care no more.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to say that in the end.
Well, I hope she would be here today, but that would be great.
Get it in person.
After all those back and forths, right?
Yes.
Finally.
So finally some resolution. I know it's still a misdemeanor, but we plug away as we can, right?
We got to get the word out. I'm playing around with the market. No. Try not to.
Uh, next thing I want to update the board on is the shooting incident that happened Sunday about six eleven. I will give a brief synopsis. Um, Sunday, May twelfth, six eleven, Franklin Township officers responded to a report of a shooting suspect from Madison County traveling eastbound on Hall Road towards Georgeville Road. Franklin Township officers, along with CPB officers, locked the suspect in at the intersection of Klein and Georgeville. The suspect exited his vehicle, began firing a handgun towards the CPB officers, striking one of the officers. Township officers returned fire. The suspect ran eastbound. Officers secured the suspect, began to render aid, awaiting the fire department. The suspect was pronounced deceased. Um, it's a tragic incident, but it's a good example of the training our officers get and how they actually handle a life and death situation. So they've all three done excellent. Um, all three are back to work today. So.
It's awesome.
Extremely happy.
Job well done. Um, Chief, is, is that it on that? I don't want to interrupt.
Yeah, that's all for that.
But I do want to, I, I will interrupt you for a minute. I want to commend you. I, I've talked to you personally on the phone. Um, the way you've handled the press, the way you've handled the situation, keeping all, making sure that all of us was in, in the know on what, what you knew.
Right.
Kept us in, with knowledge that we didn't have. Um, I want to commend you on that. Um, I know a lot of times we give you a lot of heat up here, but when praises due, praises due, and I would praise you today of how you and your lieutenant and your men reacted to the situation in the field. Um, I think you should be very proud of it. Um, proud of your men, proud of yourself on how you handled the situation. So that's, I know, like I said, I've talked to you personally, but I wanted to do it publicly.
I appreciate it.
And I really, you know, we've talked about other things and we'll make it happen.
They've done an excellent job, so.
Yeah.
Everybody went home, everybody's safe.
I've seen the footage and, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
If I may, I'd like to also commend, we've seen the footage. I know I did, you said you did. The teamwork in which they did, we had an officer and a lot of you were here. One of the officers had only been on, what, four days?
Yeah, that was his first day driving the car.
And, uh, within the first, first ten minutes of him out on his own with a, well, with another officer, but in a car.
Driving.
The first call that came out was that call and, uh, away he went. Um, I watched that intently and I, I watched other departments. And it was a well-oiled machine watching this position, just like you would see a military backing each other up to get up to the person. So I commend you on that. And I would also ask, is there anything more the board can do as far as any additional training to get our people into that's not just shooting targets, but actually clearing rooms, buildings, and getting educated on working like that?
Right. We've already increased our training budget this week or this year. So myself and Sergeant Moore are already looking at different- We've already increased our training budget this week or this year, so myself and Sergeant Moore are already looking at different types of scenario training and things we can do. Just to, just to strengthen our skills, make it, you know, enhance even more.
I, I, not to interrupt again, but I, I know personally was, being part of the FOPA and working with FOP Columbus. Will let us go through their trainings and I believe the Sheriff's Department will let us go through their trainings, even if we can, I mean, we, we just use all of that if we need to. But yeah, this, this definitely.
We're always trying to collaborate with other agencies as much as we can. It was, it was a great effort by all departments, everything worked seamless and it couldn't went really tragic.
It could have went, it could have went south real quick.
Yeah.
I'm just glad all of our guys, all of them went home that night, including the officer that was hit.
Including the CPD officer, yes.
One of the things I noticed in watching the video, as I said, I didn't watch it intently. It would be my belief that we need to look at our AKs or ARs and see if we get something with a shorter nozzle.
We do, we.
Trying to get out with that and rack it because that spies time.
It, it does typically, that's not a situation you would be able to do regardless of how short it is. If he had been driving, he wouldn't have been able to do that.
That's a good point.
Effectively drive. We do have three of them, most of the officers like to carry their own, but they have that option and we can always look at getting more.
Okay, and lastly, most important thing is, and this is for the board. I would like to ask the board that we allow that take home car, that was a day that was important, I know Lieutenant was here quickly, he had his take home car. I wanted you to feel comfortable if you take the take home car home.
I do, I do, I have it.
Okay, so. The rest of the board feeling?
Yeah, it's what it's worth right now.
Right. But everything worked out.
I would just, anything I would say with that is just make sure we, whatever we get handed down from the state, we, we buy by. I mean, that's, yep. We have whatever that is, whatever that is.
I don't think you ever told you couldn't take it home, that was your decision.
That was your decision.
So for us to even, that's your viewpoint, yeah.
Yeah, it's my viewpoint.
My main concern today was that you feel comfortable from the board's, their position. Giving this stitch, the situation with everything up in the air with the state and this and that and everyone wanting to do the right thing. I can understand that leaving it sit in the parking lot, you can't go wrong. But I wanted you to feel that you have the support of this board for taking home car because there was two incidences that you would have to come in. Had the gentleman with the, turned the gun on.
Yeah. Fortunately, I was here for that one.
Right.
On scene, but.
Right, that could have turned, that showed restraint that Officer Kidwell did not. When that guy pointed that semi-automatic at him as they were chasing, he had two choices, he could have went ahead and eliminated the threat or tried to apprehend him.
It could have been two, two bad situations in seven months, so I'm glad it wasn't.
Yeah, and this has happened more frequently and as I said to, at, at the, the two new officers. I didn't know that this was going to happen so quick when I gave my little assumption of what Franklin Township in the world we live in, how quickly that came to light.
Well, I'm really happy with how they both responded, even though the one officer wasn't involved. Still, when something like that happens, it's still kind of traumatic for the entire department because it brings you back into reality. So they're, they're all doing well, they all responded well. So we're very proud of them.
John is, Mr. Fleschman is correct on, you know, we're going to be seeing more and more of it out in the township. And every time I watch a press conference, the city of Columbus, my head wants to explode because they have helped create this issue back during the riots of twenty twenty. When they did not do anything to punish the people rioting and taking and destroying people's personal property and basically said it's okay to be a thug.
No, we're.
In my opinion.
Just to say.
Yeah, in my opinion, that, you know, they said it was okay to be a thug. And they, they helped create this issue that the county and the suburbs are facing today. And it's going to, it's going to be a lot worse before it gets better, let's, let's make sure we guys, our guys have what they need.
As much training, shooting range time as possible.
More of a win than an if.
Right.
Yeah, unfortunately.
It's, it's not the guy that turns his gun this way, it's the guy that can have under a second draw and, and actually hit the target if he had to.
Unfortunately, our officers go into it.
What else you got, Chief?
Handcuffed, yeah, what else do you have, Chief?
So next, I would like to talk to, I've talked to Steve. We'd like to pursue possibly the thirteenth officer as opposed to part-time. We believe we have enough money, I would like at least the blessing of the board to pursue it, possibly sit down with fiscal, Jav, go over everything, finalize it. It's easier to find full-time than part-time and we can certainly use the extra help.
I, I, I personally, and I'll, and I'll go ahead and make a motion that you pursue it, as long as it's in your budget and you find the money in your budget. For the thirteenth officer, I don't have a problem with you pursuing to find it and see, you know, explore those avenues. That, as a department head, in my opinion, that's your job to work with fiscal and explore it. I mean, you should be looking better, your department with fiscal department every day of where the money's going to come from, but yeah. You, if you want a motion to, to explore it.
I think we should.
I'll give it to you, I'll give you a motion to explore hiring the thirteenth officer and doing the evaluations of funding and the evaluations of the officer when needed be. And I would ask for, is there any discussion on it? Hearing no discussion, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Ma'am, will you give us a roll call?
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Lastly, I want to give enough the, the board on the block safety fiasco in my opinion. So just a very short recap. They first told us in order to have access to the system, we had to purchase a minimum amount of cameras, which they told us was two cameras. The board passed the necessary resolution allowing us to do that. During the, the setup phone conferences, they advised us that we now have to purchase four cameras instead of two. Sorry, we made a mistake, you want them, you don't want them. I know Steve has reached out to Julie and correct me if I'm wrong and I wasn't party to the conversation, but she basically said, well, if they made a mistake, they made a mistake, there's not a lot you guys can do about it. So we have a revised quote, I think Steve got even another one today. My personal opinion is even though I think the cameras are, are a great resource. I would personally rather take that money and earmark it towards the thirteenth officer, making sure we have money for, for officers. Because an officer is going to be more valuable than these, just the cameras themselves. But that's my opinion.
I couldn't, I couldn't concur enough, I mean, we all sat here and we did the Zoom, we heard the gentleman and, you know, we all were thankful and this, that and the other. Who's to say we buy four, you don't have to jump five, I mean, how far is that carrot you got to chase?
And Chief, I applaud you again for, for looking at it that way, it's better to put it back in the department, whether it's a thirteenth officer or it's.
Be training or equipment. The only thing is, even if you use ARP money upfront, we all know that goes away, so then we have to look at budgeting twelve thousand for the next year. The price is probably going to go up every time you sign a new contract. So at what point do you say, okay, we just don't want your cameras anymore?
No, we're stuck with it.
We're kind of stuck with it, so it's better to earmark that to something more tangible that we, we really need.
I think it's just kind of, kind of, my opinion, it's poor business practices to do something like that.
Kind of a bait and switch.
Yeah.
I know they said they made a mistake, but.
And, you know, this, this too shall, this too shall spread around.
I'm not sure where they're out of, talked to you about this this morning, Byron, but I believe they'll have a better business bureau wherever they're out of. And we would have the ability to make a complaint.
Yeah.
If they're a better business bureau. Because they must do a lot of business for law enforcement and so if law enforcement goes in and takes a look at that, how do we know this isn't the first time this has happened?
I'm sure, sure out of Atlanta, Georgia. So that's my.
And I would even check with the Atlanta, Georgia, if they have that as well, what you call the better business bureau. So Chief, one last question, is there, I know I've asked this many times. The homeless that get in the islands like in Broad, Wilson, Drake or Fisher and Broad or right there. Can we just start writing citations for them being in, in the medium, I mean, we can't do anything about the panhandling.
Roger takes one to jail almost every day.
Wow, I don't care about going to jail, but if we can.
They have warrants, so they have to.
Yeah.
The problem is.
They're homeless, they're not going to pay a citation.
Right, but.
To answer your question, yes, but flip side is, it is a revolving door.
I understand.
But that is what we're doing, I mean, every day.
Eventually, they may get the, you know, they may get it.
Honestly, if, if the court system was imposing some kind of justice, I would say they would, but it's more of an inconvenience. It's not like they have anywhere to be, so going to jail for a couple hours, getting something in the evening, the shower. I, I don't know if that's enough of a, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But that is the process, that is what we do regardless.
With everything that we have coming in, I can tell you now, if I was putting twenty million dollars, a hundred million dollars in the area. I know it doesn't look to certain people that we may not be doing anything, I know when I travel Wilson Road and on all, I know you can't do nothing about on the corners. But in the medium itself and at Phillip High, they're just standing in the street.
Even on the corners, we stop them and check them, you know, they're writing tickets.
Phillip High, Georgeville Road, you could, you could have, you could have an officer there around the clock. And maybe the Sheriff's Department can help out, watch them with that too, but.
I mean, Columbus is a safe way to sit, maybe we could go to what, drop them off downtown.
Yeah, that.
Sounds like a plan.
Hypothetically, right.
I have a question for you, it's more, it's more of a clarification. In order to trespass somebody off of a property, say it's a, say it's a gas station, okay, Speedway. The manager or person on site would have to request you to trespass them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, somebody had either that or in some cases, like we'll say Speedway down at sixty two and Brown. You know, they've set it up for their corporate, they've signed a document giving us permission to trespass people off the property. So we don't even have to involve the management at that point, uh, from the store level.
We have that on West.
We have that on West.
And West Broad too. Okay, we do have that on West Broad Street?
I'm pretty sure we have that in place.
I would sat through that.
But if we, if we don't, if we don't have that in place, then what we would do is go into a representative from the store and say. Hey, we got a call here, do you want them to trespass? Since we're talking about West Broad, I've seen various times where the person, the representative of Speedway inside the store says, no, they're not bothering anybody. Well, at that point, unless that person's doing something illegal, we have no authority to make them leave.
Well, they, we've got, we got someone that emailed us in a question and, and we're, we're trying to take care of all these situations. Is that they've got a tent city, let me, let me make sure.
I guess they have tents on the property.
Tents set up on the, behind the store, on the alleyway area.
Across, across the alley in that little extra parking lot.
I don't know if it's there or if it's right, it, it will right against the building, but they got tents set up and in the back, it says in the back parking lot, back block. So I'm assuming you have that little parking area.
Yeah.
I don't know who owns that little parking area.
Speedway.
Okay. Could you just check into that?
So my last question on this matter would be, I understand if we had, if we have, because you and I both sat through and we talked to corporate and they were here and et cetera. They, even though we have that authority to remove the people and et cetera, because corporate has sent that down and allowed us to do that. Do, if we see it, can we do something or do we have to walk in and say something?
No, once we have that document, that trespass order signed by the property owner or whoever, then we no longer have to involve.
Okay, so I can almost ninety percent say certainty that we have that, I know that we, because we even had, I seen the, the video or the, or the body cam. We arrest a person that we trespass them and we, you know, they were there and this is West Broad Street. There was a gentleman at night, I think Todd was involved in that and he's like, you can't do this, this is private property and at that, and at that point, we had that. So I think it's ongoing unless they canceled it.
I mean, it's possible, I can check, Nicole, we kind of keeps those on file.
Okay.
The only hiccup to something like that would be if the manager of the store came out and said, no. You know, they, they technically could override it for our purposes, I suppose, but that would be an issue within the company at that point. We would have to get a hold of corporate and say, you know, which way is it, kind of thing.
Or can we say until corporate tells us differently, we're doing it?
Well, when you have a representative on the scene. They do catch them.
Okay.
And it would probably would overhaul that at least at that point.
And you might want to get with the road department, I know they're super slammed with grass cutting, but if, if we go through there and do trespassing and haul them away. We're going to need to get, get all that trash out of there.
Okay.
Same day, tents and everything, let's, let's not make it comfortable for these people. Thank you.
Welcome.
So I have. You have anything for?
Sure.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you again for Sunday.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Fire department, it's you.
Good afternoon, I just had a couple of housekeeping items and I'll turn it over to Todd and give you some updates. We had a firefighter resign. And if we could just have a motion to accept the resignation of firefighter Tanner Smith by June first.
I would make a motion to accept the resol, resignation of.
Tanner Smith.
Tanner Smith. Resignation of Tanner Smith on June first. And any further questions on that? Hearing none, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, ma'am.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Is that Tanner Smith, the one that had the thing in Cleveland?
Yes.
I thought I recognized, good family, is he moving to another?
Yeah, he found an opportunity outside of the fire service he couldn't turn down, so.
Okay.
Landed on.
Real good family.
Pretty well, yeah. And with that, Steve and I discussed, I was under the assumption that didn't do three meetings a month, so I kind of rushed the next step in this. So we had a resolution prepared to hire Tanner's replacement. Boy, it's not necessary if you want to push it for, till the next meeting since we are having one.
You got your resolution?
I do.
You have to.
I've been for you to meet anyway, this is Preston Reese.
Welcome, Preston.
You want to, you want to tell a little bit about himself?
Yeah, for sure, you want to stand up?
Yeah.
So my name is Preston Reese, I got my medic this past year in November. Been working part-time Madison Township down in Canal Winchester and I am here and excited to be a part of the Franklin Township third quarter.
You want to read the resolution?
With that said, be it resolved by the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. That the board approves and endorses the recommendation of the fire chief to hire Preston Reese, effective June third, twenty twenty four. As a firefighter level one with an annual salary of fifty four thousand, four hundred and thirty-five cents per Article nineteen of IAF Local 41 CBA.
And just for the record, that is resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero seven four. I would make a motion, we accept the resolution as written and ask if there's any discussion. Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, ma'am.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving back into the tournament?
It's a crazy night.
My next question, if it's, if you can coordinate with him, we'll bring him in on the thirtieth and sorry, then.
Coordinate that with.
Thank you.
Coordinate that with Mr. Major.
Which firehouse?
Wherever they told me.
One of the neighbors down the street had this one.
Okay.
I'll wait that.
Moving, anything else for Chief?
Just unless anyone has questions or comments, I'll turn it over to Todd real quick and give you some updates.
Okay, we get to hear from Todd twice today.
Todd, I commend you on addressing the board in the way you did and just putting it right out there, so, thank you.
But it's, it's all factual.
I mean, it's, it's not, I don't think it personally.
It's just one of those things that when it was brought to my attention, we, we need to move forward in the correct manner, follow the right law. So, Conderosa, are we going to go ahead and pick our contractor and deal with it? I know we've already passed a resolution that we can, they will pass their. I know we've already passed a resolution that we can, um, they're well past their, their date to tear down the Conderosa three fifty five Georgia. Have we picked anybody yet for that?
We, we are starting the process, yeah. Um, I have to wait till the timeline of, I think it's thirty days.
We haven't gotten there yet.
Uh, I will have to check.
Okay. And another question, Mr. Tool, now we're talking outside, um, about Shakers. I know we said six months, um, have you received any correspondence from them as far as what they're doing?
I have. Um, I've ordered it, it was, it was basically a correspondence to one trustee, it was me. In that meeting, I was more about wanting to tear it down, et cetera. And it was strange, the way the correspondence went, was they're trying to tell me, well, maybe we should tear it down, and we would like to be closer to what's gonna happen at Westlam Mall.
The reason why I ask you, so I was there yesterday, um, and the legal is secure again. Um, yeah, it's unsecure, there was a gentleman on the property that I, I respectfully mentioned to him that there was a. I believe Chief Smith, there's a trespass order on that property.
Yes.
I, I informed him that he should not be there, and that if a police officer came around and found him there, um, he would probably be arrested for trespassing. He's like, man, I got no place else to go, like, I'm sorry, I wish I could help you more, but I can't. And I made Chief Smith aware of the situation, and he was handling with his officers at that point, but I just wanted to keep you guys in the loop about. What I had found and what I'm doing for that property, so that way we can see if they meet the benchmarks that they agreed with you guys when you gave them that six months.
No, no, they have not. They were supposed to be here this month, and they have not shown up, so. We'd ask them to show up every month. I think Mr. Love wants to speak on that later.
I can do it now if you want me to.
Go right ahead.
So I feel like they have not reached, or kept their end of the bargain up. They worked a minimum to put up signs and maybe a chain link fence. They were supposed to come back every month, and it was basically for nothing. I also went there yesterday. The gentleman I ran to, ran into was crooked all in black. Scared to death. And I was unaware, because I was not able to access that until yesterday. They still haven't even cleaned up the whole back, there's still burned things back there and stuff like that, and so. I spoke earlier that I think it's time to maybe reconsider. I was one of the ones that wanted to give them the opportunity, and the reason why is, my parents had a business here in the township for twenty-five years. And I highly respect people who have had small businesses and things like that, but we cannot continue on. And since I did that, I've heard from people that say they wished I hadn't done that, and they live in the area and different things like that. So if they're not going to uphold to what they agreed to, then I feel like we bring it back up. On the next agenda, okay with that, some guys, and, uh, we move forward. So, that, that was, I had spoken, I was gonna bring it up because it wasn't really on air, I'm glad you did, gave me the opportunity, so. That tells you where I stand, and I believe these other two gentlemen are with me, so.
Yeah, we, we'd ask them, and they haven't filled anything, so. We will handle it next, next board meeting.
Yeah, that's what I want, I want to make you aware of what I found, I didn't know you were there yesterday.
Well, I know I was gonna speak about it today, so it was important to me to go yesterday.
We had you down here for Jackson, we've talked about everybody but Jackson.
Um, nine forty five Jackson, it's a warehouse structure, multiple, multiple suites in it. They had three outstanding permits that have since expired, um, unfortunately, and I, I, I won't take part of the blame for this, that. They weren't fire related, they're just structurally related, uh, they never followed through on their end, they slipped through the cracks. They're all the way now, uh, but the, the project's never been inspected or given a certificate of completion from Tool Associates. We are going to have to have a discussion at some point about how we want to move forward with this. Um, I've been in contact with Mr., Mr. Levy, the property owner, about what he is planning on doing. Um, and he has mentioned taking us to court for several different reasons. Uh, he believes we are scrutinizing him, um, and, and harassing him, uh, which I, I don't believe that's the case. But they are in violation of the building code as not having fulfilled those three permits. I talked to Mr. Tool about that earlier today also, and he said, mentioned to you folks to see what we want to do moving forward. It'd be easy for Mr. Levy to file applications for a permit for those three projects. And go through that process, have them inspected, and get a, a certificate of completion. Um, I don't think he intends to do that, per his last email. So we may have to involve legal with that to persuade him to do that, or take him, take him in front of the building board's standards as far as not completing his projects in timely fashion. I just kind of put it out there for you guys to kind of have some discussion about, see, see which stretch you wanted to go. Uh, Mr. Tool's on board with, with, uh, whatever you would like him to do, um, as far as, as far as those, those things with that property go. Like I said, it'd be easy for Mr. Levy just to resubmit some building applications, um, and proceed like a normal building permit to get the inspections and completion done, but he doesn't want to do that.
I, I think you know where I stand, I think I made it pretty clear with, um, the gentleman earlier. You're gonna do work in this township and it's commercial, you're gonna have permits, that's my opinion.
They didn't get the permits, they just never finished them, and that's, that's.
That's part of, that's part of the job.
Yeah, so, um, I'll reach out to Mr. Levy one more time and ask him to please submit permits for those, those outstanding jobs, the work that he had done. Uh, to get the inspections and other things completed, um, and depending on what his answer is, I'll make you aware of that. And at that point, I'll let Mr. Major know as well, we may need Julie to draft a letter to him stating that if he doesn't comply, we'll have to be forced to take him to, to hire a court.
Mr. Major has the full authority of this board to handle the day-to-day operations and to have meetings with Julie, so. I would, um, yeah, I highly recommend that you work with, with him, and, um, he will keep, and keep us, like you said, keep us abreast, he will keep us abreast, and you can always email us. But yeah, we're not gonna play, we're not gonna play.
Any other questions?
Tom, do you have any?
The one thing that I said earlier, and precedence. We have, as you know, we've worked on the Westlam Mall, I know the revenues that I have, wanting to see it come down, finally getting it where we're getting it. Putting hundreds of millions of dollars into that site. We cannot get a reputation of Franklin Township that you do anything. We have to follow every rule.
That's, that's why, you know, like, I keep saying it, and I'll get off the soapbox on it, unrule, unrule. These people, these taxpayers, these residents, my, you know, my neighbors deserve better than what they've gotten. And, and we're, and we're here as a board of trustees to make it better for them. And it starts with us, and we, we need to make sure that all these people speak to the fire. Mr. Love, do you have anything?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, road department.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. I only had two things on the agenda for today. I can always increase this, sir. Um, one thing that we had on the agenda, and I brought it to the board's attention, and about to be okay, we haven't started looking. Um, as you all know, that Mr. Keshire is retiring at the end of this month. And we have found somebody as a replacement for Tommy. Uh, sat down, went through everything with Mr. Major, um, with the gentleman, with his application and everything, and we decided that we're going to offer employment to Joe Hall, Joseph Hall. Who's sitting in the crowd today.
Come on up, Joe.
Tom.
He committed, met with Mr. Major, I brought him in the other day, he committed, met with Mr. Major, we kind of went over a few things. So I just need to read this out.
Yes, sir.
All right, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven five, resolution approving the hiring of one full-time road department employee. The board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that in person in the regular session at twelve P M on Thursday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty four. And the following resolution was adopted. The following trustees made a motion to be resolved that the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves hiring Joe Howard Hall as a full-time road department employee. In step C with pay rate of twenty-five, twenty-two per hour, and employment start date is effective May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, so. Be further resolved that all formal actions of the board concerning and relating to the resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board. And that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that have followed such formal actions. Open to the public and compliant with legal requirements, including section one twenty-one dash twenty-two, have the Ohio revise.
Good, thank you. Um, is that it?
I think, it's the first time I've ever had to do one of these, so I'm trying to stay.
We will, we will get through, we will get through these together.
It'd be great, it'd be great.
And I, I, I should have asked, um, Chief Arnold, uh, but. Uh, do you know if all the paperwork has been turned in on this gentleman?
Yeah, from Mr. Hall, yeah.
Okay, how about the fire?
No, we've got that for you.
We're working on it.
Okay.
Because he doesn't start until June, so we've got time.
Um, with hearing that, I would move that the resolution as written is accepted. Any discussion?
Quick question, is that step C the one that we, you know, talked about?
I, I was just wanting to verify. Okay, that's good enough for me. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a, um, second.
Full second time.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome to the new bay.
New blood. So this will be the guy that catches every snowflake on the street.
You're gonna be out there at the boom, right?
He's gonna get very familiar real quick with mowers, which he already knows a whole lot about.
Where you come from?
I'm from West Jeff.
What, what, what did you do before?
Oh, I did construction. I did like dropside trailers and, um, set them up, remodeling, and, and stuff like that.
So you're from West Jeff High School?
Yes, so, yeah.
Been doing down by Asheville, or down in that area.
Yeah, I, uh, live, used to live down south, and then I'm gonna move back up here with my, close to the mall.
Sure, okay, thank you.
The only other thing that I have is per the collective bargaining unit, that we bring it to the, uh, the board's attention, we would like to start our ten-hour day schedule that's coming up. We are backlog, and we would like to be able to get some extra time and get all this stuff done.
And still get some rest. I would make a motion that we go to the four tens.
From what time to what time?
From when? Six thirty to five.
No, 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 no.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, May twentieth through August thirty-first. Yes, May twentieth through August.
I make a motion that we go to ten-hour days, four tens from May twentieth to August thirty-first.
Yeah.
With working Fridays when need to be to get caught up on everything else.
If you will. Just like last year, I mean, when we went to this last year, we still worked, I think we only missed out on maybe. Totally. Four of those Fridays, I mean, you've got a pretty good workload.
I have, I make a motion, I would ask if there's any discussion. Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, ma'am.
James?
Yes.
John?
I say yes, but I still would love to, as you and I know, still would love to see, we don't have enough people to split it, but that's my only concern.
Trust me, I'd love to have enough people to go split it. If you seen, if you seen the, the mowing log?
I know.
We've sent out seventy, seventy-seven mow letters now, just within the last three weeks. Still need one.
We're waiting to see if we're done. Mike?
Yes. I just, I, I know we talked, and I wanted to just make sure.
No problem.
Mr. Love had his chance to vote, Dave said.
At that point, that Jim just made, I have a statement I want to make, uh, about sending out the letters.
Yes.
So you remember Mr. Sam, uh, Youngman that came in about the property behind him on Wilson?
Yes.
He had to be at a doctor's appointment today, but he wanted me to let you and the other two board members know that they mowed their property. He thinks it has a lot to do with the letter, and he wanted to thank everybody, you and your department, and the trustees and everything, and so. I told him that I would happily relay that message, uh, he definitely appreciates it. And I think the letters are a good thing, maybe people don't, maybe people's judgment of their lawn, maybe they're a reminder. And it's a, it's a process of higher device codes we have to do, and I think sometimes it lacks a little fire. And we'd actually made personal contact with that resident down there that he's speaking about also, so.
It worked, so the grass is cut, and that was what we were looking for.
I do have another address for you. There's fire training up there on, on Hague. Those houses where they've been doing the training in it, do you know what that address is?
I do not.
I'll get with you. It, it's, it's knee-high, over knee-high. Uh, it's on the east side of the street.
I know we just sent out, I just finished them up. Five houses down in one day.
Okay, the county did, the county did easement, the county did their easement on yesterday.
Send me the address on, we'll check.
So Mr. Stevens, the fence is beside the, um, ho- animal hospital.
They, we've already got her addressed too.
Okay, because they cut, but then they, it's like, you got a strip in front of your fence, and then at the street, it's like, why would you?
Yeah, we've, we've addressed all three of those parcels, you know, the one, we to the north.
Yes, the old goat cart.
Along the corner, and then the old goat cart property, those have all been addressed and in the system.
Sure, no problem. I, now, it is, correct me if I'm not right, they are supposed to take care of, of all the way to the street, is that correct?
Supposed to, yes.
Yeah.
You have some people that will tell you, and we've had it happen to us, that, um, if that's your right way, that's your right way.
The right way is for utilities, not, you still own it, you pay taxes on it.
I get it, I get it. But that's, yeah, they're supposed to be taking care of that. I know last year we ended up, we had to just cut from the fence to the roadway, because they didn't cut that.
Yeah, and that's what I, it's, it's, it'll be waste time for long with all this, Frank, and I get it. But I was just, I, I looked at that as it went by, and I could tell that they have cut the field. And it's like, you're, you're already on a zero turn, two more minutes, and you would have been fucked, done.
They take a, they're taking a zero turn through that field.
Well, whatever they're using.
Yeah.
They're, I don't know if they're opening a gate or how they're doing it.
But that, that's all, I will admit, but I, that's all I am, and if I got anything.
Nope, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, fiscal department, um, motion to pay bills and payroll. And it looks like you have a resolution.
Steve's gonna take care of it.
Steve's gonna handle the resolution, okay.
Yep, I'll get through motions, uh, bills and payroll, and then we'll hand it over to Steve. So it be resolved by the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve accounts payable from April the sixteenth through April the thirtieth, in the amount of fifty-four thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. From check number seven zero two four three to seven zero two eight six, electronic voucher six eight four through eight three sevens. That's accounts payable.
So moved on that, as the motion is written, I would ask if there's any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a second.
I will second, sir.
Here's a roll call.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Payroll, this one's got several dates because of, um, we didn't have this reading at the last meeting. Uh, be resolved by the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve payroll for the period beginning April the seventh. Through April the twentieth of twenty twenty-four, paid on April the twenty-sixth, in the amount of a hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars and one cent. From electronic vouchers seven oh one through seven fifty-eight twenty twenty-four. Um, elected officials payroll paid on May first, in the amount of nine thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-four cents. From electronic vouchers seven sixty to seven sixty-three, and payroll paid for the period of April the twenty-first through May the fourth, paid on May the tenth, in the amount of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Electronic vouchers from seven seven three through eight thirty twenty twenty-four, um, and there's attachments.
Um, so moved, as the motion is written, and I would ask if there's any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a second.
I will second.
Ma'am, will you give us a roll call?
Thank you. James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's all I have, John.
Mr. Major, you have a resolution?
I do, uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven six, it's a resolution approving the acceptance of salary reimbursement from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation. Be resolved that the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves and authorizes the acceptance of three thousand seven hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. From the Ohio B W C regarding salary reimbursement to the townships for wages paid to injured employees. Uh, and I have the exhibit attached as well. Basically, this is a seventy-two re- percent reimbursement for firefighter Eric Pierce when he was. And I have the exhibit attached as well. Basically, this is a seventy-two percent reimbursement for firefighter Eric Pierce when he was injured. He was on salary continuation, so we applied to the BWC to get, as I said, seventy-two percent of his salary reimbursed back to the township.
So moved, as the resolution's written, and I'd ask if there's any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Roll call me up.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next I have is twenty twenty four dash zero seven seven, a resolution authorize obligations approved by the township administrator between April sixteen twenty twenty-four through May fourteen twenty twenty-four. Whereas the board of trustees, a resolution twenty twenty one dash one thirty, authorizing the township administrator to approve and currate obligations of ten thousand dollars or less on behalf of the township in accordance with section five oh seven point one, one of the Ohio revised code. And again, it's from the period of April sixteen twenty twenty-four through May fourteen twenty twenty-four in the amount of thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
So moved, as the resolution's written, I would ask if there's any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next resolution twenty twenty four dash zero seven eight, a resolution approving twenty-four hours of injury leave for Officer Troy Hale. Be resolved by the board of trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves twenty-four hours of injury leave for employee Troy Hale for the period of five five twenty-four through five eighteen twenty-four per article twenty-four of the employees' collective bargaining agreement.
Chief?
Sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
What's the update status?
It returned on Monday.
He did return, okay.
Okay, so, so moved, as the resolution I've written, as long as all the paperwork is in front of this doctor, okay.
Yes.
As you said, we've got verification and you're returning to work full time on thirteenth, Monday?
I just wanted to make sure it was noted that we'd asked. I would, any discussion on this?
Yes.
Okay.
So I reached out to, you remember, I was afraid John was getting ready to go down the same path again. So you remember the last meeting where we discussed in an open meeting about the officer and his injuries and things like that? So I reached out to Ken Main, who's with Sedgwick, who represents this with, or third party for BWC claims. And after several phone calls and he checked with the lawyer, we should not be talking about people's injuries in an open meeting like we did. We should not be comparing in one employee's injury with another employee's injury. And these things were done and I brought it to your attention and you said we needed to do it. And this isn't a scolding, I'm trying to correct the action so we don't do it again, but we should not. We are here to approve, to pay him the hours, not discuss his medical thing. We should have done that in an executive session.
Yeah, sure. And, and sir, if you remember, I was not comparing, what I was asking was in regards to the, what, to our lieutenant came in for special duties. My question wasn't, it wasn't to me comparing the injury, it was comparing the light duty and there was no light duty.
Okay, well, I'm just.
That was my intent.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm, again, this isn't meant for ar- argument purposes or anything.
Just education.
It's just to bring it up so we don't make the same mistake. And I think it was a mistake and I stayed in attendance, I thought it was a mistake. And so I just wanted to, you asked for discussion and you got it.
Um, any more discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
James?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, Chief Arnold and I have been discussing, Franklin County Public Health was looking for a location to have a COVID vaccination. So like I said, the chief and I talked about, I thought it would be a great idea if they wanted to use one of our firehouses. We have a good relationship with Franklin County Public Health, so the chief coordinated it. Uh, so on Aug- August twenty-second of twenty-four, at Firehouse one ninety-two, between nine AM and one PM, public health will command and afford the public their, their COVID vaccination.
I believe flu also is COVID ant.
Who is?
It's COVID ant flu, I believe.
Flu, okay, that makes sense, that makes sense.
Okay.
Then kill two birds with one stone.
We'll put some more publications out, that's it.
Fair enough.
Yes, of course.
And then lastly, I know it's getting close, but we have National Night Out, which is going in August?
August, the first Tuesday in August.
Okay. So I just thought I would throw that out. If the trustees have any thoughts for the upcoming event?
I, I have some thoughts and I, I, I think it's, I mean, it's a great event, but I think we need to look at possibly doing some other, some different events. I mean, they can have their National Night Out, but I think we should do some, some other events. I can, I just see it as, we, we spend a lot of overtime on that with the, with the, with the road department. Fire's taken out of service for it, right? They're not.
No, it's no cost.
Okay, um, but yeah, the road department's overtime, they have a day of cleaning up the trucks and all that. I, I just think there's a better way of spending tax dollars of getting more, more bang for a buck throughout the township, but that's just my opinion. Yes?
John may, may remember that the board passed a resolution back in the day, quite historically, that the date of National Night Out was going to be Juanita Kaufman Day. As she was an anchor to our township for many, many years. And normally that award, nominations go out in the summer. I think some of us that are veterans know that the, you know, the applications go out in the summer. You guys set a date to collect those. Are you still considering that?
Cause I know Steve's kind of new for Washington.
I would.
I mean, I don't want that to get missed if we don't get involved in the event.
No, we, we could still do that.
I just don't want to miss that award.
No, I think we should still do the Juanita Kaufman Award.
It's usually someone that's engaged within that event.
I think there's other, you know, there's other things that we can do within size of township to recognize them. I, I mean, we, we have one event a year and that's down there and I think there, I think the township deserves more than one.
And again, for people that may not be aware of it, Juanita Wolfman, Wolfman Kaufman Award. She has since passed, but her life dream was to fly in a helicopter. Unfortunately, that day it was raining and this and they couldn't safely take her up, but she got to sit in it and that was from National Night Out there.
I just want to make sure that that, we're not forgetting the nominations.
We, we, yeah, thank you. But that, that's my opinion is, is we need to take the money that we spend on that and overtime. And, and I, I, I think, you know, the fire truck, touch the truck was awesome, the, that, that was a grueling one, that, that was an awesome event. You know, things like that, we have, our, our township is spread out everywhere. I, I think that's something that we could do and instead of spending, doing all one night. Do it, do it for all the township all over, but that's just, like I said.
Any other discussion? We have to make a decision, we just wanted us to bring it up, correct? So it's worth, you know, getting started on.
Anything else, Steve?
That's all I have for, for you gentlemen.
Mr. Fletchman, you have anything for? Just one thing for the board. Several meetings ago, probably several months ago, when Jeff was in and he took the podium. And I know a lot of the audience and as well as the board member were kind of all struck with some of the things that he was saying. I feel that maybe a lot of the public and, you know, nothing's ever been brought up in regards to the fiscal department. I would love to have the opportunity, I think it's only fair for Lindsay to be able to, she may have not known about it or replayed it or et cetera. But I think that she should be given the opportunity to address the residents as well as that was our very first, if I remember right, that was our first online video for Franklin Township. So I don't know if there's a lot of people wondering, did they sweep it under the rug? Did they not say anything? But I think that she should be given the opportunity to go back and maybe answer things to the public or give a statement to the public in regards to those, so that it doesn't seem as if it was one-sided.
And I, I think we're going, Mr. Mazer, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wilczek wants to address the board next meeting of, of some of the stuff that he's finishing up. Maybe that's a good time to have.
Some reconciliations.
Yeah, I'd hate to turn this into a courtroom type situation. I don't think it's fair to Lindsay to do that at that time. But just for the public, I want to put it out there, we heard, we took it at heart and it hasn't been swept under the rug, but I still think.
We had a special meeting that was on two, on two.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, you know, she should have the opportunity to address.
Maybe, maybe she can be here on the thirty.
If she felt comfortable, I mean, it's up to her. That's all I have.
Can you reach out and ask her if she would like to address anything on that? Or I can if you, I can reach out to her, you can.
Maybe at the same time, we can get an update on how their, her and Jeff's meetings are going together. I thought it was.
I have, I can speak on that.
Okay.
Um, I had talked to both of them before the last meeting. They were in, in, in Robin's office doing something with the federal government.
Okay.
And I'd asked them how it was going and they, they both, they both agreed that it was going well.
And then they are meeting and sort of talking about fiscal, this would be on me if John's not on my, my topic. So like, where are we at on getting help in the fiscal department? Like, we agreed to get a helper and I'm getting a little concerned on the amount of checks that we're seeing come out and what's getting behind, are we getting behind? We, I'm not, it's hard to talk about, you know, we've had an employee out and then things like that. This isn't not anything about Lindsay, this is about, we, we are obligated to get things taken care of either.
Sure, that's, the hiring of someone for that department falls upon.
I, I concur with what Mr. Blavins.
I, I agree with what Mr. Blavins is saying.
Because it's not fair for the department to have one person down there and when that person comes back, they have the work of two weeks backed up and are still doing it in the forty hour week time period. That, that makes it kind of tough. It's not, I mean, we're trustees, we oversee the township, so I don't want to say it's not our department. But we do need to try to see if we can work with fiscal and say, I, I don't know what the best thing to say at this exact point. But the work still needs to get done versus skip, because I expect there to be a mountain of checks, like you were saying. I came in early for that thinking, okay, the last two weeks, we had nothing really.
Well, for me, this isn't me saying Lindsay's doing a good job, bad job or indifferent, because I don't know. What I do know and what I've observed from sitting back there all those years and now being here, there should be things coming across this table that's not. And I don't want to be held responsible.
Absolutely.
When I used to sit back there and ask you questions, like do we have late fees and things like that?
Absolutely.
I absolutely think we have a problem and we, we've agreed for her to hire another person. I'm, I'm not saying that it's, you know, I'm saying we've agreed to do it, let's get the person hired, let's get him in here and let's get caught up.
Mr. Now, one of the things too that I've caught wind of is Lindsay, from my best understanding, has been told in regards to the union that the union, this position, not her, the new one, but the current position with the fiscal office should not be in the union. So I don't know where that stands. Do you have anything on that?
Yes, sir, Lindsay, that's, that's.
Between Lindsay and the state auditor. But my understanding that that's what she has been told recently.
Okay, so I've lost, um.
Okay, we're, we're.
The reason I'm saying is that need to be cleaned up before we hire another person.
So say it again, because you lost me there. I, I know this bothers you, but you're gonna have to hang on.
No, I'm good.
Okay, say it again.
Okay, so what I was wondering is do, I'm all for adding another person, but I was brought to light and it wasn't by me. It was by the state saying that you have people in the union that should not be in the union. From my understanding, within the last two weeks, she was told that the union, this, the position cannot be in the union, from my understanding. I didn't hear that from Lindsay. So what I am saying.
Where did you hear it from?
From, I've heard it from our administrator.
Okay, and so you heard it from the administrator?
Right.
Did you hear it from the administrator?
Yes.
Why didn't I hear it from him?
Well, let me finish.
What, what, what did, no, wait, wait.
Hang on, if I, let me finish. So what I'm saying here, so that I'm clear, is do we need to make sure that we're cleared up on that before we bring another person in, is alls I was asking.
Okay, I hear what you're asking, but now I'm asking my question.
Well, what, now what am I responsible for?
What, he asked me who I heard that, that what Lindsay has been told from, that, and I said I heard it from the administrator.
All right, all right, good, cause I, I was a little worried there. Yes, Lindsay communicated to me that she spoke with the county prosecutor who handles employment law and that anybody in the fiscal office should not be part of the union. Yes, that is correct. That's what I heard from Lindsay.
So alls I'm saying is do we need to make sure we have clarification before we bring another person in, before we create more of a.
If that's what, if that's what it is, that's what it is.
Right.
My question is, why was I not given this information?
I don't think it's, it was my privy or concern or, or job to relay something that just deals strictly with fiscal.
But it was your privy or your job to give it to these two, John?
Well, I happened to ask an update, I ask a question about it.
This, Michael, this has been a concern since you came on the board and I, and I'm sorry that, you know, I try to do everything.
Oh, I know you do, your plate is full.
No, no, no.
You know, I know all of that, I've heard all of that, okay, so.
So in, in, for me, I happened to ask about it because I know that this is a topic that we needed another person. In talking with Mr. Mazer, he, as I was just now saying, I didn't hear from Lindsay myself and you asked me who I heard it from, I told you. This wasn't an email that went out, this wasn't anything. It was merely a discussion with the administrator. I did not send that out because of the simple fact that it was just in the passing of discussion.
I'll end at this, if the position can't be in the union, then the position can't be in the union.
Right.
I'm good with that.
Right.
But I want to be kept abreast of everything.
I can understand that.
And you'd be upset if the shoe was on the other foot.
I, I don't know, because I walked the line on that, because it wasn't something that was, I think that Lindsay should have kept us abreast on that and I thought maybe it would come up today. I didn't know Lindsay wasn't going to be here.
Right, I, I had asked another question, I can't even remember what the question was, about another subject that Mr. Mazer had told me, but I guess communications. Anything I have is there's a email, it says, no, email questions in to the administrator before eleven o'clock and I have one here. Questioning the ditch behind, let me see it here, the ditch behind Harding, I believe it's Road Drive Avenue over in Brook, not Brookside.
Broadland.
Broadland, thank you. Yes, there, there had been some pictures sent. That ditch is part of the city of Columbus, therefore it's out of our jurisdiction. There's nothing really we can do about it. And I had asked the chief in this meeting here that about the homeless tents behind Speedway and he is going to be checking into them.
So that, if I may, sir.
Yeah.
That ditch that is in question, isn't that part of the railroad there?
That is part of the road.
So I know at one time, many, many years ago, we done two things. One, there was an organization that went in and helped clean it up, trash for cash. The other time, there was another trustee that worked with the railroad, finally got them to come in and clean that up. And they got like two tons of trash out there.
You wanna, you wanna reach out to the railroad?
I can try to see if we can figure out who it is with the railroad. I don't know who, but I can try to see if I can find who's responsible for that.
Can you try that?
I'll try it.
Yeah, we'll try it.
Make some calls and see if I can get someone to call back. I know it was a very daunting task last time to get someone to call back.
I remember it, well, even though I wasn't here.
Yeah, and, you know, it is out of our jurisdiction though.
Yeah.
The fence row is where it's at. The fence row is us, beyond the fence row where the trash is and unfortunately. The fence row is where it's at, the fence row is us, beyond the fence row where the trash is, and unfortunately we have found a lot of that trash, know where it comes from? Some of the houses that back up to it.
Yeah.
And we had, not saying all of them, I said we, we came, uh, we have seen it, we've been told, and some of the trash that we found at one time. Hopefully that's not the case with this, but when you're talking about how else can we get there?
Right.
So, don't know for sure, it was just assumption.
Let me know, I, I, that's a very small railroad and I do know, I do know they, they run the, they store the engines out by the firehouse.
And I gotta find out exactly, do you know which, I'll get with you later, cause then I'll make some calls, but I want to make sure I'm heading the right way, which railroad?
Uh, we can do that, yeah, sure, anything else? Hearing nothing, meetings adjourned.
At what time?